Good afternoon. I would like to call this special public meeting of the Davenport City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Ambrose Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Tompkins.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Kluel.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Eight present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And we have one item of business today, a name clearing hearing, a name clearing, public hearing pursuant to Iowa Code Section 372.15. Nicole Bribiasco-Ledger and Shiley Garrett have requested this opportunity to address the council on their removal from the Civil Rights, Davenport Civil Rights Commission. You may step to the podium and proceed.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Davenport City Council members. My name is Michael Malloy, and I represent Davenport Civil Rights Commissioners Nicole Bribiasco-Ledger and Shiley Garrett, who are also here today and will be addressing you folks. Now, we have filed a number of motions with the Davenport City Clerk. One, a motion for recusal of this city council as the hearing body because we believe that you've already prejudged this case. And we've also filed a motion for removal of this matter to the Iowa District Court for Scott County. We have a case pending entitled Bribiasco-Ledger and Garrett v. Clips and the City of Davenport. We believe that there should be a fair and neutral body that would preside at this particular hearing this morning or this afternoon, and I would request at this time that the council vote on the motions that we made for removal and recusal in this case.
Well, we are here today to listen to your presentation, so we would ask that you would please proceed.
So I just want to make a record here, Mayor, that you're refusing to have the city council vote on the motion for removal to District Court, motion to recuse the city council as a hearing body officer, and motion to continue this hearing because the city failed to publish the proper notice in the newspaper of this hearing. They waited three days before the hearing to do so, and the minimum Iowa City Code period is four days under Chapter 362.3 of the Iowa Code.
If I may, I'd like to have our attorney address and clarify that assertion. Mr. Warner or Mr. Davidson? I think Mr. Warner.
Your Honor, I can tackle the first part of his assertion. There were several there.
Please do.
As far as his motion of recusal and removal, this is not an adjudicatory function. So those motions are inappropriate. The council's not going to make a fact finding today. The council's not going to take a vote on whether the removal was appropriate. Under Iowa Code, this is essentially the petitioner's opportunity to give their version of the reasons that were set forth in your removal letter.
Thank you. And maybe the other on the notice issue that was mentioned?
Your Honor, Richard Davidson, outside counsel for the City of Davenport on this matter. The question regarding the publication of notice of the public hearing was resolved in a case involving the City of Riverdale, and the court held, and the Court of Appeals held in that case, that no public notice was required to be published for a hearing under the code section that we are here to discuss today, 372.15. And regardless of that fact, the council is not going to take any action with respect to any of the motions that have been presented by the parties. The council is here to listen to the presentations as required by the Iowa Code, and there is, this is the scheduled time for the meeting. It's been published in the agenda. That's been posted for many days, and the council should proceed at this time.
And in response to that, Mayor, I would say that the city decided to publish this notice, and when they do that, they have to comply with the Iowa State Code, Section 362.3, by publication four days before the public hearing is held. That was not done. On April 15th, 2019, Davenport's mayor sent a letter to four commissioners stating that he was removing these four commissioners, including Nicole Bribiasco-Ledger and Shiley Garrett, from the Davenport Civil Rights Commission. The cookie cutter letter makes these same allegations against all four commissioners. There's no distinction in the letter. The mayor's letter claims that all ten Davenport City Council members concurred with the mayor's removal action, and each of the Davenport City Council member's signature appears on this particular letter. And I have introduced this removal letter as an exhibit with the clerk today. That very same day, April 15th, 2019, Alderman Michael Mattson sent an email to the mayor, City Administrator Cory Spiegel, and City Attorney Thomas Warner at 8:05 PM concerning the mayor's letter. Alderman Mattson stated he had concerns about what was sent out, and he specifically stated five different concerns in his April 15th, 2019 letter. Alderman Mattson's email reads as follows. Number one, I did not see the actual content of this letter in advance of it being publicly sent. Number two, I am concerned with the wordage in paragraph number 11. Number three, I request any future correspondence, letters of actions, or written action items with my signature be first drafted and sent out for comment before officially publishing. Number four, also, I am curious why this was not taken to the city council executive session. Number five, I request as much public notice and information on possible new appointees. Given the sensitivity of this issue, I think the more transparent we are, the better. Now, it appears, based upon Alderman Mattson's letter, that he did not sign that letter. It was signed by some robo-machine, and he was not aware of the actual content of the letter in advance. And perhaps Mr. Mattson at some time today's public hearing would wish to comment on that and set the record straight. But what it does is Alderman Mattson's April 15th, 2019 letter raises significant issues on whether or not each council member investigated these spurless allegations, whether they had a meeting with the mayor or other aldermen, and then whether each of you actually personally signed this letter that went out on April 15th, 2019. According to Alderman Mattson's email, it appears that he never saw the actual content of the removal letter before it was sent. Perhaps you were given the wrong information by the mayor. Perhaps you did not read this letter before signing it. Perhaps you were not given the letter prior to its issuance, and it begs the question of why this particular letter was released to the media before my clients even received this removal letter. We need to know for the record whether you met, the city council met with the mayor regarding this April 15th, 2019 removal letter. In any event, it appears that you consented and concurred, and your signatures appear on the April 15th, 2019 letter. Therefore, you have already prejudged the mayor's removal action in this matter and cannot sit here today as a fair, objective, and neutral hearing body. We have the right to a neutral hearing before an impartial panel today. As I've already stated, we filed motions to remove this matter to the Iowa District Court for Scott County. We also filed the motion for this city council to recuse themselves in this particular hearing because we believe there is a conflict of interest because of your signature of the mayor's letter. We believe that you have the authority as a city council, like you do on any matter that comes before the council, to vote on it and to overrule the mayor if you believe the evidence shows that he should be overruled on his removal letter. This hearing today is not being conducted before a neutral body because the city council has a conflict of interest in the matter today by your signature on the removal letter, and we believe that therefore this hearing should be held before an impartial hearing body. Now, the mayor, instead of supervising the Public Works Director and the City Administrator to ensure that Davenport had adequate flood protection matters in place in March and April of this year, spent time seeking the removal of four existing hard-working members of the Davenport City Council because of his intent to politicize the commission. The mayor has retaliated against the commission for opposing the City of Davenport's attempt to pass an unlawful civil rights ordinance back in August of 2018. You remember back in 2018 when all of a sudden a ordinance appeared before this city council, and nobody claimed ownership of it, but it was an ordinance to take over the control and supervision of the Davenport Civil Rights Commission. Since that time, there has been dissension and discord caused by the mayor's action with the Davenport Civil Rights Commission in the past year. You remember that the mayor announced he was withdrawing the ordinance after there was intense opposition from the Davenport public that appeared before this city council and expressed their opposition to it at two or more public hearings that were held here in this chambers. After being told, of course, that by many citizens that they considered the ordinance amendment unlawful, the mayor then declared he was withdrawing the ordinance from the agenda, and that was going to supposedly be the end of the matter. Next, the mayor refused to appoint three long-serving incumbent civil rights commissioners in December of 2018, Susan Greenwald, Clyde Mayfield, and Helen Robinson, and then unlawfully sought to appoint three new commissioners without actually swearing them into office or without following lawful state code procedures necessary for them to take office. On February 4th, 2019, the Davenport Civil Rights Commission held a meeting. At that particular meeting, each commissioner signed a resolution stating that they believed that the mayor had failed to lawfully appoint the three new commissioners that were appointed by him in December of 2018. The commission publicly stated in their February 4th, 2019 resolution that the mayor failed to follow both Iowa State Law and Davenport City Code in attempting to make these three appointments after all three of the incumbent commissioners indicated to the mayor that they wished to continue their service on the commission. And we have introduced the February 4th, 2019 Davenport Civil Rights Commission resolution as an exhibit also. The commission, through its chair, Susan Greenwald, offered to try to mediate this issue with the mayor and offered to have a neutral third party intervene between the commission and the mayor to decide the appointment issue. Susan Greenwald stated this in a letter to the mayor in approximately March of this year. The mayor refused to mediate this issue to resolve this matter in an amicable manner and instead abruptly issued his April 15th, 2019 removal letter. The April 15th, 2019 removal letter was a pretext by the mayor to take total control of the Davenport Civil Rights Commission by having all of his appointees occupy the seven seats on the commission and ultimately to seek removal of Davenport Civil Rights Commission Director Latrice Lacy. We will address the actual allegations contained in the April 15th letter because it contains conclusions, contains hearsay, and it contains matters that cannot be adjudicated by the mayor but would have to be adjudicated in a court of law. First of all, the April 15th, 2019 letter, as I've stated, is addressed to all four commissioners and makes the exact same allegations against all four commissioners. So therefore, you can't tell which allegations are specific to which commissioner. It's a carte blanche, allegations made against all four commissioners, and all four commissioners received the same letter from the mayor. My clients, Ledger and Garrett, deserve to know the exact specifications made against them individually, and the letter, of course, fails to do that. The letter claims that the commission violated the Iowa Open Meetings Law and the Iowa Public Records Law. These allegations are without a legal or factual basis. You cannot remove a public official by making specious allegations claiming the official violated the open meetings law. Iowa State Law has a procedure pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Iowa Code for making open meetings violations. Chapter 21 of the Iowa Code requires a body or a person to file a petition in the Iowa District Court alleging the open meetings violation. The matter must proceed before an Iowa District Court judge for determination by a court, and legal proof presented that a violation occurred must be established with evidence in a court of law. A public official has the due process right to rebut and challenge any violation has occurred. A public official has the right to rely upon the advice of legal counsel as a defense. Discovery is conducted through depositions, interrogatories, requests for production of documents. Subpoenas may be issued. A court trial is conducted, and a decision is rendered by a district court judge who actually adjudicates the issue. Now, imagine if one of you folks were removed by the mayor for supposedly violating the Iowa Open Meetings Law. He sends you a letter and says you're immediately removed from the Davenport City Council. Well, folks, this is exactly what happened on a different level to the four Davenport Civil Rights Commissioners. They had no time to rebut this. There was no hearing to adjudicate this. There was simply a letter stating allegations and conclusions of law that they allegedly violated the open meetings law. However, the mayor does not get to decide if there's an open meetings violation. That's what the district court is for. That's what a judge is for. And prior to sending this letter, the mayor did not talk to myself as attorney for the Davenport Civil Rights Commission, nor did he talk to the commission's, excuse me, director about these issues, but instead simply talked to his own attorneys who could not and did not represent the commission and their legal interests. The mayor's letter goes on to claim that the commission aided and abetted other commissioners to act insubordinarily. That claim has no legal basis in this matter. The term "aided and abetted" is a term found in criminal law statutes. If the mayor believes that the commissioners should be charged of a crime, then he must go to the Scott County Attorney's Office and try to get a charge filed and proceed accordingly. Otherwise, the mayor cannot be the judge and jury on allegedly whether a commissioner aided and abetted another commissioner to act insubordinarily. That's also a First Amendment's free speech right. It'd be as if one of you aldermen talked to another alderman after a meeting about something on the agenda, then maybe it was an opposition to what the mayor wanted. And because you didn't agree with the mayor and you wish to vote that particular resolution, ordinance, or motion down, you talked to one of your fellow aldermen about it because you wanted to collaborate their opinion on it. That's your right as an alderman, I believe, under the First Amendment and as a lawful Davenport City alderman. In this case, because commissioners talked to themselves about the mayor's authority to make appointments, the mayor claims that they committed a crime. Most of us know in any case that an attorney cannot represent both parties in a legal controversy, and that clearly pertains to a legal dispute between an independent state-created commission. The Davenport Civil Rights Commission was created pursuant to Section 216.19 of the Iowa State Code, creating an independent civil rights commission in any municipality with a population of 50,000 or more. The Davenport Civil Rights Commission and the mayor are involved in a legal dispute here. The Davenport City Legal Department claimed that they were representing the commission while at the same time they're representing the mayor and the city council. Under the Davenport City Code, the legal department represents the mayor and city council in legal matters. That is clear. The legal department had a conflict of interest but proceeded to make ex-party contacts with commissioners in this legal dispute, attempted to intimidate members of the commission with threats, and hired an outside law firm to render a legal opinion when that same law firm had contested cases before the Davenport Civil Rights Commission. I sent Assistant City Attorney Hire three letters warning him to stop his conduct with the Davenport Civil Rights Commission on this specific legal dispute. Because of the clear conflict of interest he had, he cannot represent the mayor and the city council and then pretend at the same time that he is representing the legal interests of the Davenport Civil Rights Commission. The letters were sent in February, March, and April of this year and asked him to stop his contacts with the commission and to direct any correspondence, any letters, through myself as the commission attorney. I have never received any response from Mr. Hire to date on any of these letters, and I believe that the city legal department is wearing two hats here. Two hats, two legal hats here. On one hand, they're representing you folks, the mayor and the council, and the other hand, on the other hand, they're holding themselves out representing the commission at the very same time. While they may be called upon to issue legal opinions to the commission as requested by the commission, they clearly cannot represent the commission when there is a definite legal dispute going on between the commission and the mayor on his mayoral appointments to the Davenport Civil Rights Commission. Now, I think you will agree that the Davenport Civil Rights Commission has the authority, just as the Davenport City Council does, to pass resolutions. Passage of a resolution stating the legal reasons for the commission's refusal to recognize an appointment because they contend it was not done lawfully is not insubordination. Oftentimes, there's disagreements among this city council over policy matters, including ordinances, resolutions, and motions. A council member who disagrees with the mayor on a particular issue is not removed from office. However, this is precisely what the mayor did here to four Davenport Civil Rights Commissioners. Because the mayor was agitated with the commission's February 4th, 2019 resolution they passed, and after the mayor refused to have the matter decided by a neutral third-party forum, the mayor retaliated against the remaining four members of the Davenport Civil Rights Commission by removing them from that body. As you are sure are aware, this matter is presently being litigated in Scott County District Court. After oral argument, Judge Lawson issued a ruling on May 31st, 2019, that held the lawsuit will proceed against the mayor after the mayor attempted to dismiss the lawsuit brought by Nicole Bribiasco-Ledger. Judge Lawson's opinion stated some law on this particular case. First of all, the city claimed that this removal process was not a quasi-judicial function, and Judge Lawson addressed that by stating the court finds the removal process was a quasi-judicial function and therefore reviewable by a certiorari action. The court further stated, quote, "Members of the city council should be cognizant of the fact that they cannot act as investigators, prosecutors, and fact-finders. A city council should not prejudge a case. It may be required to hear in the future." The court ruling also stated the following. The Iowa Supreme Court has succinctly stated that due process requires fundamental fairness in a judicial proceeding, so a trial that is fundamentally unfair violates the guarantees of due process under the United States and Iowa Constitution. Judge Lawson's ruling points out that the city council may clearly have a conflict of interest in hearing this matter. I'm requesting today that the Davenport City Council...
Your Honor, Lawyer Malloy, is this being adjudicated in court right now?
That's correct.
What are we doing here?
This is a Chapter 372.15 removal hearing that is allowed by any public official removed by the mayor.
Don't we have a little conflict if we're doing this and if this is in court? Can we get a response from one of our attorneys?
Well, I suggest you address that to your...
Alderman Ambrose, it's a 372.15 hearing. This is their, basically, state code allows them a forum to view their, or to air their position on the reasons they were removed, and that's what we're doing. The mayor's decision will be reviewed by the district court, and that's the action that's pending currently.
And if I may follow up, just, and the purpose is, is there's no adjudication, no votes or anything by us today?
That's correct, Your Honor.
And I disagree with what the legal counsel says to you. I believe as the Davenport City Council, you have the authority to reinstate these four commissioners after this public hearing today who have been unlawfully removed. And I'm requesting that you do that, do the right thing by reinstating Nicole Bribiesko Ledger and Shiley Garrett today. Thank you. And my clients will want to come up, and other members of the public may also wish to address you on this issue.
Shiley Garrett, Third Ward. Good afternoon, council members, mayor, and citizens of Davenport. Thank you for assembling today. I stand before you today to address the allegations made in the dismissal letter I received on April 15th, 2019, and the circumstances surrounding it. To be honest, I'm surprised to be standing here as I was vetted and approved by this mayor and the city council in May of 2018. In fact, I was approached and encouraged to apply for said position by a city council person, and I am choosing to exclude their name out of respect for the rules of this chamber. My interview process was filled with nothing but positive affirmations from the city council representative, the mayor, and the city attorney that were present. It was clear that I was a strong and capable candidate and lauded for my ability to be level-headed, accomplished, and pragmatic by all in attendance. But this letter and the many statements provided to the media would claim otherwise, painting me and others as defiant, disrespectful, and incompetent. I want to make it clear that I did not appoint myself to this role. I was chosen by all of you for this role. At the beginning of my tenure, I was warned about the state of the Davenport Civil Rights Commission. The city council person who recruited me felt they needed to let me know that the commission needed someone who wasn't, quote, "going to follow wild goose chases," unquote, and that the commission was, quote, "pretending there are civil rights implications to pick fights," unquote, but that I was going to be, in their words, "a rock star." I will be the first to admit I stepped into this role skeptical and presumptuous based on these conversations because I trusted this individual. Expecting to step into an office functioning in disarray and focusing on disruption, I braced myself for the worst. Instead, I found an underfunded and understaffed yet highly qualified set of individuals. To them, I'd like to take the opportunity to apologize for any assumptions I took with good faith because not only was the DCRC office functioning, it was excelling. There have been claims made that both the staff and the commissioners have slowed down the caseload and have served as an impediment to citizens who seek the services of the DCRC. If you take a moment to inquire, you'd find they're not only closing cases effectively and efficiently, they're one of the most laudable civil rights commissions in the state of Iowa. In fact, I'd like to share with you and the public some of the many accomplishments that aren't being discussed. They're the only agency in their jurisdiction that has not had any of their investigations rejected. The staff just successfully tried a housing case in the Iowa Supreme Court. They show up at local events, have community partnerships, and continue to host an annual school drive for the students of Davenport. And they're a founding member of the Scott County Juvenile Diversion Program. These are just a few small examples of the positive impact they're making in the community, and none of those sound like goose chases to me. They deserve accolades for their work and not accusations that they're harming the people that they serve. I've remained silent for a majority of this process and throughout the difficulties out of respect for the city and the role I fulfilled until my removal. I also felt, held some false hope that open communication and collaboration would bridge the gap, but unfortunately, it did not. I've taken the time to evaluate my actions, reflect on the decisions I made, and find myself left with a conundrum. Even if any of these allegations were true, which they are not, it does not resolve the issues at hand involving the need to sort out the ambiguity in the city's civil rights ordinance, and nor does it address the problematic appointment process. Were any of the new commissioners vetted for conflicts of interest by an unbiased source? How did the appointment approval process go from taking months, which was the timeline for my confirmation, to less than a week? How is it possible they were not being vetted and interviewed before the official removal of the four sitting commissioners? And why did the new appointees receive a training with the city administration when they serve as an independent agency? The city needs to answer these questions, and I'm not just asking as a former commissioner, but as a concerned citizen. Upon investigation, the interview questions and process between even Commissioner Han and I were vastly different, even though we were selected at the same time. I believe discrepancies like this one only continue to weaken the commission, which will have an enormous impact on the community the DCRC serves. Now that you know some of the truth behind my tenure, I'd like to address the elephant in the room. As Mr. Malloy has clearly outlined, the allegations within the dismissal letter have not been handed down by a court of law, nor have formal charges been served. In fact, the only court this has played out in for me is the Court of Public Opinion. The April 15th correspondence, among others, were rife with problematic and unprofessional language and serve as yet another example of the city council and mayor using their authority to silence and shame. While I would have liked the opportunity to address every accusation that pertains specifically to me, as stated in the letter, only, quote, "some of the reasons," unquote, were explicitly named in the correspondence, and, quote, "applicability to individual commissioners may vary," unquote. Since I was removed both individually and collectively, I wanted to touch on a few key paragraphs and points that I find individually and collectively concerning to me. The first is paragraph five, which states, quote, "You have aided and abetted Susan Greenwald, Helen Roberson, and Clyde Mayfield, who have no authority to do so, to falsely claim to be, or to assume to act as appointed commissioners of the DCRC in violation of Iowa law," unquote. The tense used and the confidence of the claim isn't just an accusation. It's stated as fact that commissioners have committed a crime with no proof, and the three necessary criteria for the charges are not met. Nor does the mayor have the authority to charge commissioners with crimes for completing their duties in good faith. What is a fact is that paragraph five can be considered a libelous statement that can impede any commissioner's future opportunities or employment, leaving the city vulnerable to violations of the EEOC. The true danger of this document isn't the fear it's supposed to incite, it's the aggressive assertions that are devoid of empathy or factual evidence for the recipient. Moving along, I'd like to address paragraph nine, which states that, quote, "Commissioners Han and Chaver followed through and met with me," unquote. The "me" is in reference to the mayor. I was never contacted concerning the individual meetings described in paragraph nine, and neither the matter nor my continued service were discussed with me. I was informed by a fellow commissioner at a city council meeting that they had met with the mayor and that I would be receiving a phone call as well. I never received said phone call or voicemail and was later notified that my phone was out of, out of service when a call was attempted. Not only is my phone number on file in the DCRC office, the only other meeting I've ever scheduled with the mayor's office was via email for my appointment using the phone number on file in the DCRC office. And there are clearly other modes of communication that could have been used if someone truly wanted to contact me. Considering the importance of the matter, I would think an email, a letter, or double-checking with the DCRC office would have sufficed and required minimal effort. This leaves me with a few questions. Why was I the only commissioner not contacted about this matter? Why were Mr. Han and Ms. Chaver contacted a week prior to any attempts at communication with me or Ms. Bribiesko Ledger? And why wasn't it shared that two city council members were also present in these individual meetings in the letter? To be honest, I probably would not have taken the meeting anyways for fear of violating the Iowa Open Meetings Law. Throughout the letter, I'm accused of violating this exact law, but I felt a private individual meeting with the mayor and two city council members could potentially be a violation. After all, the law is there so Iowa government at all levels is as transparent and accountable to the public as possible. By technicality, since a majority of either body was not present, these meetings are passable. Morally, I would not feel comfortable with making decisions with that much impact behind closed doors. Nothing about this process has been transparent for me. Attempts at collaboration, communication, or mediation with the DCRC commissioners were all dismissed or disregarded. While public statements were made that you were working with the commission on these issues, no one showed up to our meetings to discuss potential solutions. Rather authoritative decisions were handed down within a letter. Finally, I'd like to conclude with paragraph 11 from the dismissal letter because it had a lasting impact on me. I've rewritten it hundreds of times, and I still can't process the malintent that's included as the paragraph stated the following, quote, "Your course of behavior lacks respect for representative government and the rule of law. It is at once shocking and disappointing that individuals entrusted to oversee civil rights would engage in this behavior. You unbelievably took the stand that the commission determines its own membership," unquote. The tone and language worked to belittle, attack, and shame the recipient. To use such blanket statements and assert that one doesn't respect democracy because they don't agree with you is appalling. I find it ironic that I, a recipient of the Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizenship Award, am accused of having little respect for the laws of this land. Second, if you were truly an ally, you would know that civil rights progress is often born out of incivility. Martin Luther King Jr. himself was labeled an enemy of the state by the FBI and often imprisoned for his efforts. To say that those who are entrusted to oversee civil rights wouldn't engage in behavior that is challenging to the status quo is laughable. If the diction wasn't problematic enough, to invoke respectability and civility as a reason for dismissal is shocking and most likely present just to attempt to humiliate the recipient. It diminished our true concerns about the lack of clarity of the language within the ordinance that governs us all and would have protected everyone in this room. Civility as a means of argument in this case is simply a deflection and a means of avoidance to mask the real issue at hand. When those in authority are challenged, civility is historically deployed to silence those who speak truth to power and to oppress those who serve as a messenger for the disenfranchised. Council members, do you truly feel comfortable having co-signed this message, and specifically this paragraph, to me? By co-signing this correspondence, it tells me that you may have never considered the person on the other end because after all, we are all strangers to each other. We were both humans, and we both deserve to be treated with dignity and compassion even when being dismissed. I'm sure it feels easy and simple to accuse, to blame, and to harm someone when you don't have to look them in the eye and be held accountable. In fact, I'm sure you might still feel righteous and steadfast in this endeavor, that you're doing the right thing. But so do I. I'm not here to clear my name specifically with you, rather the communities I will continue to serve in a different capacity. I knew coming into this based on the signatures within my dismissal that a consensus had already been established without having spoken with anyone present here. I knew coming into this I would not be receiving a hearing in which a vote of reinstatement would potentially be considered, even though it should, seeing as checks and balances are necessary for a healthy, functional local government entity. I've taken this opportunity to ask questions, pose challenges to the allegations made, and shed light on the truth. As a society, we applaud those who stand here, unfeeling and deliberate in their delivery, neutral, strong, apathetic. Mr. Malloy has shared his legal opinion with you, a pragmatic approach. I've shared my own experiences with direct quotations, a practical approach. But there's one more approach to this, an emotional one, and it's one that I want you to reflect on. Just as my reputation has been tarnished, so has yours. I'm sure it doesn't feel good to be bombarded by people asking you to resign. And I'm sure it doesn't feel good to hear citizens at every council meeting telling you that you're horrible people. You've often interjected on behalf of your colleagues to protect them because you care about them. I wish there had been someone on this council that had interjected for me, protected me, and cared about me, a constituent of yours like you do each other. I want you to know that your actions had real consequences for me as a person, that this document wasn't just a letter of dismissal. It was a letter meant to cause harm to the recipients through intimidation, punishment, and public embarrassment. While the new commissioners have been treated with respect and civility by having their personal information redacted or not referenced within media statements or the city's website, our privacy was violated and personal safety jeopardized when this letter was distributed to the media with our home addresses unredacted. Whether through malevolence or simple negligence, you've placed me in harm's way. I'm a young, bisexual, Jewish, transracially internationally adopted immigrant woman of color. My location has now been broadcast to any individual who may want to cause harm to such a person. With events like the Austin package bombing, the Tree of Life synagogue shooting, and an alarming escalation of hate crimes and other horrific acts of violence committed against minority communities, the gravity of having my address publicly posted and distributed on a large scale is not lost on me. You've almost literally opened the door for former stalkers, rapists, and abusers to locate me. This entire ordeal has been difficult for my family, who is feared for my safety. It's been difficult for my friends who rallied to ensure I felt supported. It was difficult for mentors and peers in this community who have always known me to be an upstanding, ambitious, and kind person. It was difficult for my mental health to watch years and years of volunteerism, service awards, and academic achievements be replaced by all of this. But I know this is microscopic in comparison to the pain and suffering that may come from all of this for the minority communities of Davenport, and I fear for them because history is not in their favor. But having said all that, I'd still like to conclude with a hopeful message. To the new commissioners, I wish you the best because your work is important, necessary, and impactful. And I can only hope that positivity and progress will continue in your tenure. I have never had any ill will towards any of the new appointees and have high hopes for them because I know they have already accomplished great things. To the mayor and city council members, I wish you the best. I hope this hearing has given you pause and the potential for change. At worst, I've affirmed your beliefs about me and the other commissioners who were dismissed. But at best, I've planted a seed of doubt surrounding this unfortunate situation and the actions taken. I only have one request. I stand up here today to apologize for the presumptions I held about the DCRC in the past, and I hope you do too. I hope you challenge the preconceived notions you hold and reach out to them about the work that they do. Healing can always happen, no matter how hard fought the battle has been. And to the DCRC staff, I wish them the best and thank them for the world-changing work they do. Thank you for your time.
My name is Nicole Bribiesko Ledger, and I have served on the commission for nine years, since 2009. I was appointed by Mayor Galuba. I didn't prepare a huge speech. I'm letting my lawyer Malloy and Shiley speak for me. I'm not gonna restate everything they've said because I think they've said it quite well. I haven't stayed silent like Shiley. You guys have heard from me at different hearings, and so you know my position. I think this goes back further than August. I think it goes back to when Latrice was charged with assault. I think when we chose not to get rid of her is when it all started. And that is when the ordinance came and we pushed against that. And this is all retaliation because we did not do what you guys wanted us to do. And so I do not appreciate my name being slandered in the most public way with the media. I get to clear my name here for the people that are here, for you guys that have already judged me. And so by any means, I do not think this is fair at all, that you guys are the ones that I'm clearing my name in front of. And all the times that I've been on the commission for nine years, I have never had an issue. There has never been anything like this. We've done our work. Most meetings are actually very boring. I mean, there wasn't anything going on. And then all of a sudden, this all transpired. And so I'm not sure where all of a sudden in the nine years, I all of a sudden am incompetent and cannot do my job. The only thing I can think is because I did not agree with the mayor. And so the threats of fines and jail and Brian Hayer continually harassing me isn't gonna stop this. I know my name's not gonna be cleared with you guys, but I just wanted to get up here and say that, and they speak for me, everything that they've said, so, thank you.
Ms. Garrett or Ms. Bribiesko Ledger, do you have anything else you want to share at this time? No. No. Again, I just wanted to reiterate the point to, and this is not a hearing where we accept, we talk to witnesses or whatever, or other people. This is basically to hear the information, give you the opportunity to do that. Mr. Malloy, is there anything else you have to say at this point?
Not at this time, Your Honor, but Susan Greenwald...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, again, this was designed to hear both Ms. Garrett and Ms. Bribiesko-Ledger. I want to have our attorneys reiterate, this is not a voting situation, so if you wanted to maybe make sure we clarify that again in detail.
That's correct, Your Honor. The decision of removal, again, as Mr. Malloy has said, is in the Iowa District Court and will be reviewed by a judge.
Thank you. And I think the items that you're discussing will be reviewed by a judge. We're not in a position to judge that. We wanted to give you an opportunity to move forward.
He said that you could rescind it and make the case null and void. Why don't you do that?
Well, again, we...
Again, you don't want to.
What kind of hearing is this?
The issue is, this was again decided as a name-clearing hearing, giving them an opportunity to speak. As I think has been mentioned before, there's interest, there's, excuse me, sir, there's interest by the court to review this information, which they will do, and then we will find out the information as Mr. Malloy had indicated, that they will make the final decision related to this.
And as we're meeting, we'll have a public speaking.
And we will have an opportunity to do that.
Mayor, this is a public hearing. You don't have the right to cut it off. There's other people that wish to address the council on this. Susan Greenwald is here...
Why do you think you can just do whatever you can do, whatever you want to do? Why do you think that?
Okay, Mr., again, I asked our legal counsel, the issue is, because of the nature of this, this was designed, and I think publicly, for the two individuals and their attorney to speak. I don't want to make this into more challenge than it is. I think the opportunity is that this will be, as many people wanted to have this done, finally reviewed by a court, and that's going to be the process, and many individuals will have that opportunity to speak at that time.
Right, and then when they find that you were wrong, then you guys are all going to look horrible, more horrible than you already do because you didn't rescind it like you have the opportunity to.
And us taxpayers have to pay for your mistakes.
And our taxpayers also have to pay for Brian Hayer being at Civil Rights Commission meetings for no reason at all. Why is he at Civil Rights Commission meetings on my tax dollars?
Okay, and again, I just want to, I want to make sure we understand, we have no opportunity to vote here, that's not what this is designed to do.
We have the opportunity to rescind whatever you have done.
We do not have that opportunity today.
You do.
Pardon me?
Why does the accuser run the needle? Exactly.
I would just say, under the circumstances, this will go to the court, they will make a decision, and we will, of course, live with the results of the court findings. Anything else? Anything else anyone to say? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, you still have people to hear.
If you wish. Huh?
You have disrespected your people.
Mayor Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I apologize if I've had any role in the lack of transparency and communication on this. After listening to these two young ladies, I'm...
A terrible person.
Well, I've been called that before, so, but for the longest time I've been on the council, our Civil Rights Commission has done a phenomenal job, and all of a sudden it went off the rails, and I was...
When they didn't do what you wanted them to do.
Well, no. I thought our Civil Rights Commission has done a phenomenal job. I don't know where and how it went so...
Why did you sign off on it?
I'm a terrible letter saying terrible things about these people. I have a question.
Well, yeah, you know...
Put the address out so everybody can see it.
Well...
You said it went off the rails. Can you explain to me what we did that went off the rails?
Well, I just listened to both you young ladies, and you made a compelling case. You know, I've always had a good relationship with our Civil Rights Director, so as far as lack of communication and lack of transparency, I've always taken very pride, the city of Davenport being transparent, but boy, it sure wasn't during this process, and I apologize. You know, hopefully...
We have this last August.
I know, I know.
We've been here saying this to all this...
I know. I've been here, I've been listening to Lawyer Malloy, I've been listening to the people protesting.
Listen to the lawyer because we're going to tell exactly what's going on. If he's giving you advice.
I can't wait to move out of this town.
Alderman Condon, do you have anything else you want to share?
Fire the attorney.
Yeah, I just wanted to personally thank Ms. Ledger and Ms. Garrett for serving on the Civil Rights Commission, and I'm encouraged to hear that you guys will continue to seek engagement in public service, so thank you.
Alderman Mattson.
I too want to apologize. I listen to your, I have no issue with you all. And to answer your question, yes, I sent it, it's obvious that I did, and I had concerns, and I still do. I'll look forward to seeing what happens in court.
Anyone else of the council colleagues? Again, this will be decided, and many of you will have an opportunity to relate to that court case, so with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Meaning adjourn.
The taxpayers don't get to speak. Shame, shame, shame.